That kind of the current draft, et cetera. Many of you received an unsigned letter in the mail dated, I think it was January 17th, 2022. It discussed the zoning plan and asked you to send comments. This letter was not sent by the zoning commission nor by the town board. We don't know who sent it, but it has sparked a lot of emails and comments. And many people thought it was sent by us. Thank you to those of us who have sent me email messages. I am collecting all the communications we receive and sharing them with the other town commission members, zoning commission members. I finally got the website out. The Dropbox out tonight. We are discussing if and how we can reply to all comments at this meeting during the meeting this evening. We're going to try to list some questions, perhaps grouped and put them on the website with some answers. Specific comments about a section of the first draft of the zoning law will be read by everyone and considered. We will try to notify you when answers are posted. We will have some posted by this Friday, we believe. I hope you will understand that the zoning commission only received the first draft. That's the document that's up on the website and the maps in the first week of January from our consultants. The consultants attempted to understand what they had heard from us. The comments that had made that been made at the various meetings we've held during this year or last year and at the two public meetings. And to put that all into the format of the law. Zoning commission members, all of us who are volunteers and residents of the town of Caroline, have been reading that draft document and adding questions and comments. We are now beginning to work through committees on the various articles of the draft document. Through this work and the work at upcoming zoning commission meetings, we will make changes to the draft document and emerge with a second version. We will then repeat this process with other sections of the draft document because we are, I think we're at the moment looking at one, two, three, four, five of the articles. Our goal is to continue to receive public comment, incorporate ideas, and then bring a new draft version back to the public at least two weeks before any public informational meeting is held. We will have another public information meeting. After that, we will again revise the document. And depending on our progress, schedule a public hearing, which is a formal proceeding required as a required part of the process. At a zoning commission, we may not, as a zoning commission, we may not present our final report to the town board until after a formal public hearing has been held. Thank you again for your interest. The zoning commission has meetings scheduled tonight and February 8th and February 22nd. We will schedule the March and April meetings tonight. They're generally on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Thank you for your attention. We will have some public comment. At this point, I see Carissa's hand up and then Bonnie Christel Hargreaves. You will have three minutes each. Mark, can you, can you turn on Carissa's mic?
Yeah, I think, yeah, she's, she can speak.
Carissa, please identify yourself.
No zoning needed.
Well, I think that's plenty.
We're on, nobody fucking yell.
Carissa, are you going to speak? I think what Carissa is trying to show us is that there are about 40 people outside. At least that's what I saw as I came in, who are protesting and saying that there is no zoning needed. There's anything more you'd like to say, Carissa? Hearing none, I'm gonna go on.
No zoning needed.
We hear that, thank you. Let's go on to Bonnie Christel Hargreaves. Can you unmute her, please?
Yeah, it's stubborn.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hargreaves.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I am Bonnie Christel Hargreaves. The proposed zoning law will affect generations of hard work by my family by causing a loss of freedom that is needed for the individual to be successful in farming. I am in the Christel family and grew up on the dairy farm bordering Slaterville that you all can see from town hall. My twin sister and I walked across those fields to attend school in what is now the town hall from grades one through four. My family has worked that farm for over 70 years and continues to eventually adding more acreage as my parents could afford it. They bought one, the farm, one cow at a time when we were little and we were poor. We only went to Ithaca once every two to three weeks to get groceries because it was too far and took too much gas to go more often. We dreamed of having a grocery store nearby. This will now never happen under the zoning law. We had dairy cows as well as horses and sheep. And from the time we were four years old, my twin and I, and eventually four younger siblings, worked really hard to help our parents survive. Often we would help with sick animals until the middle of the night and then start over the next morning. Over time, the farm operation grew and my brother Rusty is now working over a thousand acres. From about 1970 to the mid 1990s, the farm was profitable, but that was short-lived. Even though farming has not been very profitable, we always thought at least we had the value of our land. Taxes, even with the add discount, began to escalate along with a cost for machinery, seed, fertilizer, and everything else. It is now impossible to make a profit farming. At least we felt we could fall back on selling lots or developing alternative businesses to survive and to be able to continue farming. Now with your zoning proposals, you greatly limit whatever choices we have and in effect are devaluing the land we worked so hard to hang on to. We need flexibility in selling land. Under the proposed, new proposed zoning law, we could only sell lots with three or more acres. And you may require them to be in the middle of the farm rather than along Hartford Road. The larger lot size will only accelerate the demise of our farm. The proposed zoning regulations are too limiting and too complex and they need to be changed. In addition, this whole process needs to be slowed down for more discussion and input from the residents. People's lives are being directly affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I saw someone else's hand before, but it went down.
Was Finger Lakes?
Was it Finger Lakes Dermatology and then Ellen Harrison? Finger Lakes Dermatology, do you want to speak? I saw your hand up for a minute.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for your work and allowing all of us to have the input into the zoning drafts. Obviously, everyone has various opinions and input, myself included. So at least I do appreciate that you're hearing us out to incorporate into subsequent drafts. I think we all look forward to reading the subsequent drafts and taking additional comments or giving you additional comments as we can provide them. Thanks.
Thank you. Ellen Harrison.
Unmuting in progress. I don't know why it takes a while.
I think it's the next thing over.
Did that work?
Yes. Good, thank you, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to you guys. I know how difficult it is to do anything with zoning anywhere, anytime. And particularly since Caroline has not had zoning and has a lot that people want to protect. I think one of the things I am wondering, and I had raised before, is that trying to preserve opportunities and farmland is critical. That we have some good farmland. That's going to become increasingly valuable as climate change makes the water that we have and the lack of fires, et cetera, really valuable. So I agree with the previous speaker that that's something we want to address or I think we want to address in the zoning. I don't, I have not read this draft. I just got it yesterday, so I would like to speak again later about it. But I saw some information about the Danby zoning ordinance recently adopted, I believe. And it employs transfer of development rights. The idea that some of the value in the farmland that a previous speaker was just speaking to, that that value gets transferred to, let's say, in some of the hamlets or areas where denser development is appropriate. I was very excited to see that in Danby. And I, as I say, I don't know if it's in this draft. If anybody could shake their head yes or no, that would help me, but no, okay. So I think that's critical. I think that's a way to deal with the issue the previous speaker is talking about and that we care about preserving the farmland and it's a way to provide them some, what is it, equity, whatever it is based on their past. I then would, in the future, probably comment a bit on whether I think that there should be a commercial zone, but I need to look at the square footage and get a little more knowledgeable about that. So at this point, I will call it quits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, are there? Josh? Josh? I think that's Josh Coke. Yes, so we're going to unmute you. It seems to take a bit. The electrons are slow tonight. If you hit more, what happens?
It's that one. Try it again. It always works at some point.
There we go.
There you are. Josh, this is Josh Coke, I think.
Yeah. Hi, how's it going? Thank you. Um, I did, and I will say just from the beginning that I haven't read the entire document through yet because I, I just got to it. I knew this was happening. I knew we were working on zoning because I was asked to be on the commission early on. And I, and I do want to say that I really appreciate everybody. And sorry, my two-year-old's in the background. I do really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing on this because this is a, it's a lot, a lot of work, a lot of work. And but, so I have only read through, I've gotten about, through about 50 pages. That's what I did the first half of today. And I did, I did submit an email that I wrote based on those first 50 pages. So I will try to obviously get through the rest of this and hope to comment more as, as we, as we go along. But so really all I want to do is just sum up a few things from that, which is just that, yeah, I think it's just important to make sure that everybody has enough time. You know, that, because this is, this is huge, you know? This is huge, going from no zoning to from what looks like at first glance, in some ways fairly restrictive zoning. So, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to, and, and I mean, it seems like you guys are doing that. But, you know, slow it down a little bit so that we can make sure that everybody gets their say. And, and also just to, you know, there were a few things in there. I agree with the mission statement of, at least of parts of it, about protecting the rural character and and the farmland. I just think that some of the things that we have in there, like I, I came on a little late, but I heard someone speaking about that three acre parcel thing. And I think that, you know, the intent of that is to protect farmland. And I think it might have the opposite effect of what's intended, depending on how it gets enacted. So that's kind of one thing. But, and then I did notice just some, you know, I just think that maybe we might want to consider that. And I don't know if this is true, but I think that somehow, this was partially kicked off by the whole Dollar General thing, which I, you know, at least I personally think it would be, yeah, bad to have a Dollar General store here. So I'm glad that we're dealing with that. But I don't, you know, I think there's ways to prevent things like that without having, you know, zoning on the level of Ithaca or something like that.
You have about 30 more seconds.
Okay, not to say that it's not, not to say that we don't maybe need zoning. Maybe it's time for Caroline to have zoning. But, but I think that maybe we could, I don't think that it maybe needs to be as complicated or restrictive as it seems like maybe it is. So anyway, just want to consider that as we go along.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands up. I, I don't see anyone waving. Thank you. We're going to close public comment and we're going to go on to the approval of the minutes of the meeting on January 11th. Would someone on the committee like to move them, please? Feel free to wave wildly at me. Thank you, Michelle. And a second?
Second, this is Barb.
Thank you, Barb. I also saw Ernie waving. Thanks very much. Any questions, any comments, additions, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye or nod aye at me.
Aye.
I see thumbs up, thank you. That is approved. The town board liaison report, Tim Murray, please.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for the large populace joining this meeting. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. The town board, I want to repeat what Jean mentioned, that I just want to make everybody understand that the town board did not authorize or author the letter that went out that appeared to be going out under the, under the position of the zoning, the zoning commission, which it did not. Secondly, I just want to mention that the town clerk has reported to the town board that she's received a significant number of FOIL requests, Freedom of Information Act requests, many of which seem to be related to this issue. And I'd just like to pass on her expression of concern for your patience. This is tax season and the town clerk's office is the busiest it ever is during this month. So I know that the town clerk is trying as hard as she can to generate and respond to all of these FOIL requests. But, but thank you very, very much for your patience because she's clearly very, very overloaded right now. And I know that she's very committed to getting this done. So thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Bill, is there anything from the planning board?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is planning board and one is different. So from the planning board standpoint, I think mostly Will and I have hammered out final language on the battery energy storage law. And what remains is for me to sort of write a cover letter to the town board explaining what we all did to generate that and then pass it on to them. So I think that we are finally in the final stages of that. I want to raise an additional question and Jean, you can just tell me, okay, we're not going there. Because I know that we're not in general responding to comments made during approach of the floor. But a statement was made about a three acre minimum lot size, which is actually an incorrect understanding of the zoning proposal. And I don't know if we should correct that now while we have the people on who heard that comment or how you want to deal with that.
Bill, if you'd like to correct that, that's fine. Bill and Barb have said that they will respond to, they're going to try to compile answers and get them up, so feel free.
All right. So I just want to clarify and other folks can, can jump in that while there is a statement in there about a three, one house per three acres density maximum for the outer lying parts of Caroline, that they were called the agricultural and rural zone. There's no requirement, actually, where it says minimum lot size, it says NA, not applicable. There is no minimum lot size outside that established by the health department because there's no public water in that agricultural zone. In other words, you could indeed divide up several one acre parcels on, you guys say have a farm field and sell them off. As I understand the way the zoning law is created, and that can help correct me. What you can't do is do a lot of those so that the density in that region exceeds on average, one house per three acres. So it does not require three acres per house. Various lot sizes can be used as long as that is the overall measure of whatever hundred acre, 50 acre sample size is used. And I, you know, I do not understand the details of all that will be calculated. Nan can fill us in, but I do want to make it clear, there is no, exactly because I and others felt strongly, you should not, if someone who needs to sell some property to gain some extra funds, should not be mandated to sell three, five, 10, 15, 20 acres. Because in other proposals, keep the density low by making huge lot sizes. We didn't think that was a wise way to go. We preferred to give the flexibility to the landlord to configure the lots as they wished, but at the same time meet the overarching goal of the town that many people have voiced, which is to keep much of the town in basically for the rural state. Therefore, we would not want to develop the entire thing in one acre lots. So I hope that clarifies that there is no minimum lot size. You'd not be mandated to sell off three acres as a, as a minimum lot.
Thank you, Bill. Let me also add that nothing is decided yet. We are in the process of reading this, commenting, talking back and forth of each other. We will probably, I think, proceed by trying to come to agreement on articles, one by one, and perhaps even sections of articles as we get more information for you and we finish this draft and create a second draft. And then we still have to, we'll have to vote in the end as a, as a commission to forward whatever we come with at the very end of this process to the town board, which will have to hear people's opinions again, ultimately hold a public hearing, which is again a formal process, and then vote. So there are no decisions yet. We are proceeding down a path. But thank you, Bill. So it would be good if I went back to my agenda so I knew what I was doing. Just a thought. Thank you, because I think I left it. Oh, no, here it is. It's good. Okay, so the first draft of the zoning law. So we have divided into groups. And what I'd like to see, and I think most of us have been able to get into the document and provide comments. And what I'd like to do is see if we can get some reports from the various committees. So Michelle, tell us about your committee and what you have done so far.
Well, I forwarded everybody a summary of what we've done so far. So I just wanted to see if people got that. But we, we went over sections, you know, articles one and two, and basically made a list of things that we, you know, we addressed the comments that people have made and made notes about whether we agreed with them or not. And we identified a few areas that we feel need full discussion by the, discussion by the full committee. And so I don't have it open in front of me because I'm doing this. But I think the first thing we wanted to discuss is really the boundaries of the hamlets that were proposed. And it may be easier, I think the very first thing is, you know, we've, the, the hamlets that were proposed had very, a very large hamlet, basically a combination of Beesimer, Brooktondale, with Brooktondale Center in it. And so our, our first comment would be to separate that. And Bill has a map that would explain how that would be done. So I don't know if you want to just jump right into that or how you want to go.
I do, I think that makes sense. And while Bill is getting that up, I'm going to ask Nan. This is Nan Stolzenberg, who is our, our consultant. As we go through this, Nan, we'll probably turn to you a bunch and ask you some questions. And if you have anything you want to say right now, feel free. Nope, keep going. Okay.
I hope everyone can see the map sketch now.
Yep.
All right, so Michelle, do you want to talk about this or how do you want to do this?
No, I think I'll let you talk about it because you really did the work on this, so.
Well, I can wave my, my cursor over to it. I know it's hard to see the little crosshairs that, that P D, the rack or back makes. So okay, so, and this goes hand in hand with the table that was sent out, that sort of compares the uses in here, this hamlet commercial district, which is here and also over here near the end of Midar Road, with the uses in what was called Brooktondale Center, this kind of darker brown, and the uses in this whatever olive color that was the combined Beesimer and Brooktondale hamlet. And, you know, the intent was, and including the way it was laid out on the table, to sort of make this area and these areas more residentially focused. And that's in sort of the purpose statements. Have the most intense mixed use here in the center. And then, you know, we have, you know, sort of a, a bit of a transition here. And so we can look at that comparison table. Partly because of sort of how I think folks who tend to live in here feel about it. But also because I personally, you know, would suggest that we open up this region here, which is just to the northwest of the Brooktondale Center. And this parts along, you know, again, value rating of this way, that we make them a little bit more like Brooktondale Center. It is, they have a bit more commercial opportunity. And leave this, whoops, sorry about the click in there, this whole area out here as the more residentially focused area. But that's a philosophy, a choice to be made. But the, the proposal potentially, for us to discuss, would you make some division between what was Beesimer, Brooktondale? I was sketching out somewhere here along where Beesimer Road hits, you know, Brooktondale Road. Incorporate those into what we were calling Brooktondale Center, call that Brooktondale. Take these stretches here, put them in with this. That's all one zone, its own set of rules that might be a bit, will be more commercially oriented than the rules out here. And then, you know, have, perhaps have this more central region. Now, one question, because you talked about complexity, is, you know, I think Nan did a great job interpreting the various things you talked about. One question would be, well, do we really need a distinction between a hamlet commercial and the rest of Brooktondale? I think it was a great choice and then it said we may want to maintain. But if people want to simplify, when we're to simplify is to drop some of those distinctions. That either means this becomes somewhat different restrictions or this out here, it gets, gets tighter or this gets looser. I'm not sure which. All right, so that's one thing. Barb had made a note about potentially taking this stretch out here, which is along Route 79, currently actively being farmed and removing it from the Beesimer residential hamlet designation with the eye towards helping to sort of provide long-term the varied development, farm field development, open space development, farm field field as you drive across the town. So that's in the, in the running would be to take what is currently an active farm. And I think either is or certainly is very close to prime farmland and drop it out of that and put it back into the ag rural zone. And then the other question we had talked about as, as a group, and I think we came to a rough decision agreement on is that to divide Slaterville into indeed West Slaterville here, Slaterville Springs over here, and drop out this piece in the middle, bring it back into the ag rural zone. It also is currently, and that is definitely prime farmland and definitely currently actively being farmed. That prime farmland could be protected as part of the hamlet zone, certainly. But in some ways, it might be cleaner and easier to, you know, keep it with the ag farm, ag rural district. Promulgate the sort of guidelines for that, that would cover that kind of farming activity and not have to worry about that as much in a, in a hamlet zone. And then finally, when it comes to Slaterville Springs, the, one of the questions I raised would be whether we want to designate a core area of Slaterville Springs as a sort of Slaterville commercial like we have. sort of Sladeville commercial like we have this hamlet commercial in Brooktondale. Looking at the comparison of the use table, I'm less thinking that's necessary. There's very few distinctions in uses between Sladeville and what was designated for this hamlet commercial here. And indeed, Sladeville Springs as currently designated has a larger maximum commercial footprint size than was designated for the hamlet commercial. It may make no sense to make any change in this, but that's something I think we should discuss. Should there be a, a more commercially zone inside? And then therefore, make somewhat more residential feel and zoning for these outlying pieces of West Sladeville Springs. So that's walking through the the, the map. I did indicate where the gravel pit was here. That was just so people sort of know. And again, I think they seem to be gearing up to be in business for a long, long time. But at some point in the, in the distant future, if that becomes no longer an active gravel pit, that would certainly be a, a great and prime location, given it's already disturbed land to create some sort of housing development that would be added to Brooktondale. That's my summary of the map.
Um, Bill, maybe, this is Barb, just one more comment, just to remind everybody what the purple area is, right smack dab in the middle.
Yep. So, so this is, again, in the draft law, the commercial zone, which has larger maximum footprint sizes. Certain uses that aren't deemed compatible with residences are allowed in this area. And I, you can sort of see, probably you guys can't read, but this is where celebrations is. This is the ideal storage units that are near celebrations. This is Carson's across the way. And when you cross over, you know, to the road here, Thomas Road here, this, this is Hunts. So this is where we currently have some commercial development. You know, the purpose of zoning is not necessarily to cement in place where it's already there in a community. But there are definitely times and places where, you know, if a lot of commercial structures have been established, it certainly makes a lot of sense to say it'd be a lot of work and wasteful to try to like, eventually 20 years from now, when they go to visit, try to unconvert them. So it may make sense to keep this as a commercial area, and that's the current proposal in the draft. And again, the zoning commission is actively interested in getting comments from, from residents on that.
Good. Do any members of the zoning commission have questions for, and also Bruce, you're on this committee as well, yes. For Michelle and Bruce and, and Bill. Mark can see who has questions because I can't see everybody.
I have a, I have a question.
I will.
Uh, this is Will. I, in considering the, the commission hasn't really considered putting commercial areas outside of hamlets. I have to ask how, including the current commercial areas on Midar Road, how would that be contradictory to what we've done so far? Those properties are as close to the center of Brooktondale as the outlying areas that incompatible with the residential density. I think they've just been consistently overlooked. And so I, I don't see how it would be incompatible. It, it, there's proximity, there's density, there's history, there's a good deal of square footage that has been not only built, but invested in and kept up. And checking with the assessor's office, if you make those properties non-conforming, they will immediately be assessed downward. I've been told that. I asked them. So my question is how, I don't see how that's incompatible. And I haven't heard any reasons really given for not considering them, other than that you can't see them on the and people don't of what's out there.
All right. I'm going to take a first crack at that, only because one thing, I live right out here underneath this legend that we're not seeing. But Will, what I would say, a couple of things. I think, A, I think you raised some good concerns and issues. And for example, I think food for thought is whether some of the commercial uses that are occurring out here would be things we want to make sure could continue to occur in an ag rural zone. That is a barn being used for truck or equipment storage might be fine. I personally wouldn't want to see lots and lots of ideal storage type units proliferating out here. But if there is a particular existing building or something that was built to look very much like part of the rural landscape, I have a lot less trouble with that. And so maybe that's something we should consider. I think that's an excellent point. The Donovan lighting place here, I don't know, you know, how that fits. I had to look more carefully at, well, my guess is that that would probably be okay under our current, that the zone proposed. But the main point I want to make is you're talking about distance to Brooktondale Center, whereas these units are contiguous, they're adjacent to the hamlet zone. That's the difference. You're talking about setting up a satellite out here as opposed to something that is, and the whole point of the comprehensive plan was we should search for closer development, meaning let's have development sort of as a continuation of the existing development near our hamlet zones. That's how I interpret that, that at least. But, you know, that's just my take on it. Other folks in the zoning community may have a, a different opinion.
Michelle or Bruce? I see Bruce's hand up.
And my take on it is that the commission is going to have to look at this a little bit harder as far as square footage, pieces of property, pieces of, of buildings. I, I mean, I also feel that if you look down 79, there are multiple commercial buildings from, say, Landon Road to Beesamor Hill Road. And none of that's being considered at all. And I think the big problem is somebody that has a facility of, say, X amount of size, and it doesn't fall under being used as a commercial building or a commercial use that it was being, being used for all the time for more than two years. And it's in the ag rural zone. Now all of a sudden, you no longer have the commercial. You know.
That's my grandfather.
Yeah, it's not grandfather. So you're taking a piece that maybe somebody invested a lot of money in for their retirement for, down the road. And saying that if it did, isn't how, you know, in, in a certain business for two years, now all of a sudden, depending on what zone it's in. It could fall back under that zone, and now you would lose that commercial, you know, care, which we could be a real problem.
Um, I, I wanted to say about this, Will, that I went out and drove Midar Road. And I looked at the substation. I've actually made an inquiry of Niseg about the size of that substation, whether I don't know quite how to express this. Substations have a certain amount of power, whether all of the power there is committed, or if there is significant extra power, or if they intend to add to it, because Will had said a couple of weeks ago that that might be a great location for other commercial work because of the, of the presence of the substation. And I also looked at the buildings that I think you were referring to. And my question is, are those, all those commercial activities that you're discussing in that properties, in those properties, I think on the Arsenal property, are those related to agriculture? I just don't know.
No, they're not related to agriculture. They haven't been related to agriculture for 64 years. That's when they stopped farming. If you want to split hairs and say, well, a tractor dealership is farm-related, then you can argue that, but it would still give, you know, lots and lots of years, several buildings. There are four, really, the way it's counted, there are at least four buildings, Joe. And commercial for quite some time and not farm-related.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I think it's a perception thing. I mean, there is, I, I understand what Bill is saying and how people perceive the continuity of the residential areas is fairly dense in terms of style, but it's, it's people are interested in that area as commercial. I think you all know that. So, you know, the interest is also there, apparently.
I'm sorry.
An appropriate place to develop commercially. All I can do is repeat what I said. I don't know which part of it you caught, but there are people interested. They feel it's appropriate to develop commercially along that route. Also, I'm not talking about a isolated area. It could be continuous across from the sand pit, from the gravel pit, if, you know, if that's the issue. It's, it's more a lack of flexibility in you realistically determine commercial growth, growth is appropriate when it's, it's already incompatible with the other goals of the, the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Michelle, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah. I have some questions about the whole commercial thing. And it's kind of related to what Bruce said. So there are, when Bruce, Bruce, and you can correct me on this, some of the commercial properties you're talking about, a multi-family residential, isn't that right? And, and it seems to me that multi-family residential can always, I think that's allowed in all the districts. So.
No, these, the ones I'm talking about aren't multi-family residential. I, I'm not sure where you're thinking of. There's one multi-family residential.
Well, I'm talking about Route 79. I'm not talking about your properties right now.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
I'm talking about what Bruce was mentioning. Isn't that, so am I correct that some of these commercial properties are actually multi-family residential? And those would still be allowed anywhere with certain permits. Am I correct?
Bruce, is that what you're talking about?
Some of that, what I was talking about, but some of it was the storage, some of it was, but I believe that was more than, I'm not positive, the four units. And then it's red figured commercial.
Yes, I think there's, there's the difference between.
And it also has a couple of businesses in it. So that would be commercial.
So it's considered commercial, but first of all, current, the current uses would stay, like, just because you have zoning, the, the current use doesn't suddenly get changed. You're able to maintain that use. Unless you have a period of time where it's no longer used. I would argue if you have a period of time where something is no longer used, it's no longer desired as a commercial space, then maybe it's, maybe it's no longer valuable for that purpose. But it's not saying that you would suddenly, if you have commercial properties, it's suddenly they can't be commercial anymore. And, and so this is what, I guess, what I think about for the properties that Will's talking about. Yeah, those can stay commercial. We're not saying they're not going to be commercial, but we're not suggesting creating a whole new commercial zone that would actually encourage more commercial development. I think my interpretation is that we're saying you're going to maintain those commercial areas until they're no longer needed, at which point then you can say, okay, nobody wants to rent them as commercial space. Maybe they should go back to ag rural or something. So that's, that's my take on it.
Sometimes it's.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna suggest how we might proceed with these questions, because these have been brought up tonight, and I'd really like people on the committee to go back and look at what's been written and think about the questions. I will enumerate them that they got brought up tonight. Then I'd like to have a serious discussion about these parts next week and try to make some decisions about what has been brought up and move along. But I don't want to make those decisions tonight because I feel like I need to go back and read some more. Bruce?
You were talking about the substation.
I was talking about the substation, yeah.
That substation, I, I believe will have to be expanded because the Tavelli Farm, that power is supposed to go to that substation and then be fed into the river.
Okay, well, I, I think I'll get an answer from Niseg. I hope to God.
And the other thing was, just going back to something that we haven't even looked at, that just hit me when Bill was talking about that property, is that particular piece of property, that one building, that was a small airport for a single, for small planes.
A private airport.
Yeah, private airport. So whether that would be commercial for sure, I would say.
Yeah, I don't know if it is now. You can't, you can't really close airports that are, that are commercial, but you can close airports that are private.
Okay, yeah, because I don't, I had no idea. And I just thought, ah, it was an airport.
Okay. So that's, is there anything else from, from Committee A that you'd like to have us discuss next week in detail? Michelle and Bill, you have.
Michelle, go ahead.
I, I guess, well, some other things on that list were having hamlet commercial in West Sladeville Springs. And Bruce, or Bill, are you saying that you, you're not sure about that now, or what?
Yeah, I was, I brought up, and again, as I started looking at more carefully the, the differences of how Sladeville was proposed to be in terms of the, the slot sizes and, you know, minimum size of buildings. There's only about a half dozen differences between Sladeville and this hamlet commercial here. And, and it might be, we could just incorporate some of those in here and don't need to create a special commercial zone. But I did want to bring it up because maybe indeed folks would like there to be that, that those rules about, say, 5,000 minimum, maximum size of a, of a commercial facility are fine for this central region of Sladeville Springs. But maybe they don't want that out here on these duplexes along Fuller Road or whatever. So I think it's a worthwhile question for the committee to, to think about whether there should be a, a more commercially zone of Sladeville Springs compared to a more residentially zone or not. That's an open question.
Okay.
And, yeah, we had a number of questions, I think. Michelle, you're going to go through all of them. So go ahead.
Yeah, so I will look, I will look at Michelle's report again and put those in the agenda for next week. I will try to get the agenda done by this coming weekend so that it can be up at least 10 days before our next meeting. And that will also be a way for the public to see what we're going to discuss. And they could send comments because we like that.
And I'm just going to underscore in that whole list of things that was there. You know, as Nan had written the original document, there are some really, really fundamental decisions about density to, to be made. Both in the Forest Corps and not in the Forest Corps. So I urge everyone in the commission to think hard about that. And I do have a question. For Nan, you could just jot this down. In terms of your recommendation for a housing, you know, density in a Forest Corps, I just wanted, would like to know where that came from. If there's a, essentially a, a wildlife biology perspective on that, or it's what typically is done, or what the rationale was it for? You don't have to answer in person at the meeting. You could just send us all a note or whatever.
Actually, I'm going to turn to Nan now. You don't have to answer that question if you aren't ready to do that. But I just wanted to see if anything that, that came up so far is something that you'd love to comment on.
Um, I, I have a question. If you end up splitting up West Sladeville and Sladeville Springs, would you treat? If you end up splitting up West Slatorville and Slatorville Springs, would you treat those two parts the same? So they're really, from a, a regulatory point of view, they got the, the same uses, the same everything? Or are you treating them as different somehow?
Uh, great question, I think, for the zoning commission to think about. I mean, it's, it's possible that West Slatorville would be more appropriately zoned like either Brookendale, probably not like the B, perhaps the Beesamer area. I think it's a great question.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think that, that you have talked about splitting those up for quite some time. The map, you know, doesn't reflect that right now, but I think that if you do split it up, you need to answer the question about how to treat the two halves. They could be the same and call it something, or they could be two, you know, create two separate ones. So you should think about that. The other thing is that, building on what Michelle said, is the grandfathering, which is more, you know, technically called the non-conforming uses. The rules that are drafted allow, is, you know, a fairly standard way of approaching non-conforming uses, but you, you guys can change that however you feel appropriate. Because you have discussed the very issue that has been brought up about what happens to some of the existing businesses on Route 79. I included in there, not only could those businesses stay, even if they weren't in a commercial district, but it allows them to grow, and I have to look it up, I think it was 25% or some sort of size. So it does allow for those businesses to not only to continue, but to, but to expand, which many zoning laws don't allow that at all. So I think the zone, the draft recognizes that. With that said, you, you have the ability to change that if you want to allow it to grow to 50% or to 35% or whatever the number might be in terms, you can change that. The other thing is that the two-year kind of limit was, as, as Michelle said, it was that if something goes out of business and it's not some commercial use, isn't restarted in there within the two years, then that grandfathering protection goes away. But you can also change that two years. I mean, if you feel, I mean, some, some communities have one year, two years is fairly common, but if you want to give folks more time, you can change that from two years to some other timeframe. So you have the ability to, to fashion those rules so that you're not, you're not intent, you know, have unintended consequences on those existing businesses. The, the notion though is that, and this kind of goes back to what Will was talking about, is that, you know, we're looking long-term. We're not looking at just a year or two. We're looking at long-term, what are the best uses for all of these areas? So, you know, things change. I mean, I, I can't tell you how many times people have said, when we've zoned an area that, say, has a church, and we say, oh, well, the church could be converted to something else, and people, oh, it'll never be, it's always going to be a church. Well, that's not the case, and we've had lots of places that, that change over time. So I think you all have to think about, i- in terms of this grandfathering question, where the appropriate place for commercial? I mean, you, I understand everybody's concern, and we want to make the non-conforming section certainly fair, but you also have to figure out how do all of, how does all of that fit into long-term needs for the community? So that's just my, my take on that one. And then the last thing that I would say is someone brought up in the beginning about transfer of development rights, and we can address that. I can send you information, and it, it's certainly philosophically a great idea, and I'm a huge advocate of transfer development rights. But the problem is, is that, talk about complicated. I mean, they are extremely complicated systems to manage, and they are completely market-driven. And if the market for housing, for instance, or for commercial development is higher in DMV than in Caroline, that might make it work, but transfer development rights in New York State has really only worked in a handful of spots. We're talking like Downstate, Long Island, Boston, in Saratoga County, the fastest-growing town in the state. And they had a transfer of development rights program for several years and decided it was not working and it was too complicated to work, and they changed it to a different way of trying to protect open space. So I love the technique. I, you know, if you want to look into it, I can send you information. It's a very difficult technique to actually make happen on the ground. So that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we go on to Committee B. Ernie?
That would, that would be Barb and me.
Yep.
Barb was gonna let me speak, I think, right?
That's very generous of her.
All right, well, you know, basically, Section V5 is supplementary standards. And the supplementary standards covers a pretty broad range of, of subjects. And we went through quite a bit of it, and, you know, there's lots of little comments here and there that show up in the, in the master document. And, and I can go through some of those, but we're going to come to a, an area that I, you know, have, I feel we really need to spend a little bit of time on here, and rather than go into, you know, the minutia of our thinking about some of these minor edits on this, I, I would like to bring up a little bit bigger issue, and, and that is the, how the subdivision law gets incorporated into the zoning law. And, you know, basically, it's that.
That we're talking about, right? Yeah.
Okay. So in Section 5, page 45, 5.5.8, we start to get into discussion of, of subdivision and, and how things comply here. And so what we have in our, in our subdivision law, just, you know, to kind of give everybody a little bit of background, the subdivision law basically starts out with two areas of, of compliance, exempt properties and then properties that are, need to comply to the subdivision law. Exempt properties are basically, I don't, I had this in front of me, but I forgot, don't know where I put it, but, but basically, it's, it's this, you're allowed to develop up to five lots in a three-year period that's along an existing road, meeting only health department requirements. So basically, anybody, anywhere can subdivide off an acre or five one-acre lots if they've got road frontage. And so that's kind of the pattern of development that we often see in our town. Beyond that, once you start to get into either the creation of a road, or I think it's also a public utility, and you start to, or you exceed that threshold, then you're into what is kind of roughly termed a major subdivision. And so in, in our zoning regulation, we are really only talking about major subdivision. And so when we get into the discussion of cluster development and the, you know, the other incentives that we have about here, minimum lot size for, you know, larger properties, and, and how all those mathematical computations are taken care of, those are, you know, kind of in a different place in, in the law books. And so the reason I, I bring this up is because, you know, in essence, in the town of Caroline, I think there has only been one major subdivision in the almost 20 years that the subdivision law has existed. So, and so we kind of wonder, you know, why we have, or why we're, you know, working towards creating a, you know, a fairly complex and, and, and apparently, you know, at least at first blush, it looks very, very restrictive, a set of, of subdivision standards when we already have a law on the books that never applies, and these will never apply either until development pressures come to us to, that will, you know, start to make these sorts of things happen. So I don't know that there's a right or a wrong way to do this, but I want to kind of throw this out on the table. I think there's a couple of, three different ways to move forward with this. One is to kind of leave it how we have it, separate subdivision law, and then have supplementary regulations in our zoning law, which have to apply to major subdivisions. Or we could revamp the subdivision law to include the cluster subdivision concepts and, and, and that sort of stuff, so that people who are subdividing could all know about that in one law. Or we could bring the entire subdivision law into the zoning law, which I think ultimately makes some sense, because that's what we've done with the site plan review law. But it does make for a very large and, and, you know, seemingly unwidely documented. In any event, I think it would be really nice if we could make a decision about which way we wanted to go with this, because there's just a whole bunch of stuff that would then, you know, kind of get pushed somewhere else, or maybe pushed out of current consideration entirely, if, you know, some feedback we're getting is pushing us towards trying to simplify things and make them seemingly less restrictive by just simply kind of kicking the can down the road by saying, well, we're going to make a recommendation to the town that we consider cluster subdivision and those other parts of this law in the subdivision law at a later date, and then move forward with the zoning regulation without any of that stuff. So that's just what I want to bring up. I don't know if, if it's possible to, you know, collectively make a decision to go one way or the other, but I'm gonna throw it out there just because it would, it's, it's a big change, and, you know, it's a lot of, lot of stuff that would need to get swapped around to, to do it.
Anyone have any comments from the commission about this?
Well, this, this is Barb. I'm just wondering if, if there's a, you know, kind of a, a brief response that Nan might give about the, the pros and cons versus, of having all of the subdivision language within the zoning law versus a separate subdivision law and some subdivision items in the zoning law, or a separate subdivision law with all the subdivision stuff in the subdivision law, and not, not include detailed subdivision stuff in the zoning law? Nan, any, any thoughts on that in terms of, you know, implementation or, you know, legalities?
Um, yes, a couple of things. The, the section on conservation subdivision, which apply, as you said, to major subdivisions, could, and in some places are, are in the subdivision law. And there's really, for that, there, there are some pieces that overlap. So I would, you could move the majority of it over into the subdivision law, but there are a couple of things that need to be kept in the zoning that, that, that deal with lots, dimensions, anything that related to numbers, you know, percent, open space, those are zoning standards. So there's a few things that we have to stay in the zoning law, but all of those procedures, I would have no problem with them moving over to the subdivision law and having that all in one place. And that is, in my opinion, preferable than bringing the subdivision law into the zoning law, because that is not usually done. And the, the reason is, is that the subdivision law is really a law, when you have zoning, it really is a law that administers kind of the, the dimensions and the stand, the other standards that you have in the zoning. Subdivision is really more administrative, you know, it talks about the procedure and how to do a major subdivision. So we have this crossover between zoning and subdivision. It, it's a common question that comes up. I think that, and I have had this conversation with several attorneys before, and subdivision law is, has a different state authorizing legislation to it. It's, it's governed by, you know, certain state rules or how subdivisions are done and what the process would be. So I would say if you're uncomfortable with the conservation subdivision piece in the, in the zoning, it would be, it would be pretty easy to kind of take that out and put it in the subdivision law, what I said, except for those few number kind of things that really are zoning oriented. And, yeah, you know, most, a lot of rural communities don't have major subdivisions. It's, it's kind of like the, the, you know, that it's one of those rare things that a lot of rural communities aren't experiencing. But, I mean, the, the object, again, going back to what I said earlier, the object is to prepare the town for the what-ifs, and you want to be prepared for, to have the process and the community expectations in place so that if one comes, it's done in the way that meets the goals of, of the community. And I think the conservation subdivision is a great technique that, that allows development to occur in a very sensitive and, and strategic way at the same time. So, yeah, is, is it likely to ever be used? Who knows? Are you going to have one every 20 years? Maybe, but then you'll have it in place to use. I, I would be more concerned about meshing the exempt subdivision, the, those items that are exempt, I would be more concerned about making sure our language and everything is right to mesh the exempt subdivision with the zoning requirements. Because remember, a subdivision typically looks at where the lines are, and zoning looks at the kind of land and where, you know, are you creating buildable lots? So they really do different things. So, you know, that, I think you, you're certainly, if you want to move it over, we can lift that out and put it into the subdivision law if that's what you want to do.
Thank you, Nan. I see Bill's hand up.
Yeah, great, thanks. So this question sort of came up with our, our Committee A as well, because we were, I don't care how it came up, but we thought, we, along with Ernie said, that this looks like something that will probably almost never apply. And actually, one of the questions was, did that mean that that five lots in a three-year period was too large of a number or not? And I'm not saying that it is, I just, something we should all think about, but I'm in concert with Nan's comments that that doesn't mean we shouldn't prepare for the possibility. And, you know, I will share, not in a scary way, but because I'm on the planning board, I got an email from someone inquiring what is or is going to be the zoning for this particular area of town? Because we are thinking of doing, you know, a residential development. And the answer was, well, we don't know yet. And we, you know, so we can't tell you anything. So there's that one indication of some interest. That may, given that we had, you know, the voice of development ten years ago or years ago, is the next one that will occur sometime in the next five or ten years. It won't happen all that often, absolutely, but it also won't necessarily not happen. So I would be in favor, certainly, having the conservation subdivision language somewhere. I like that a lot. My fear, but I think we can try to term out my fears, is that if we decide to yank it out of zoning and put it in subdivision, that already we've got a lot on the town board's plate and so dealing with things. So the battery storage law will hopefully come up very soon. We've got the zoning thing coming up very soon. I don't know if the town board has the energy or wherewithal to take on, say, the subdivision law while we are all still working on zoning. It's whether all the parts can actually get done. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, but in some reasonably timely fashion. So if someone is planning to do some developing, A, they know what the ground rules are, so they know how to plan and don't get caught by surprise. But also that the town growth is happening in the way that the town has sort of said that it wants to. So as long as, I I like bringing that into the subdivision law, so more of those parts are in one place. But I would want to make sure that we actually get that piece done in the next year or so. And I just am concerned that we won't.
So I I am, I, listening to this, I'm also very much in favor of putting things into the subdivision law and leaving the minimum required in the zoning law. And the reason I have is that a lot of the comments we've received is are along the lines of it's too much and it's too big and it's too restrictive. I want to say one, I want to say a couple of things about this is there is no such thing as zoning light. There, there isn't, you know, like the equivalent, of course, like the earth zoning, which is actually a very good thing. So, but but the reason is, is because the state requires a lot of things to be in zoning. And there's very strict language about what has to be in there. And you, you really can't just create a law that says, you know, we think these are good ideas, but there's no, this, this, there's rules about this. So they have to be of a certain weight and measure. I think it could be something that we put in our final report to the town board that says, this is our suggestion that these things need to be amended into the zoning law. And that could be, unexcuse me, into the subdivision law. So that that could be part of our final report to you. This is the zoning law we will, we're bringing to you. And here are things that are not in the zoning law, but have come up in the course of this that we think also need to be done. And that, I think, takes care of the time factor of not letting things drift long and then it's up to the town board to go back to the planning board, Bill, and tell you to do it. Oh, it's Tim's invisible hand. It's the invisible.
I'll kick it to the review board.
No, I was just, I was, I was just going to to say that I'll be happy to talk to the town board about this. I mean, personally, I, I, I don't see much of a difference between deliberating over the subdivision issues embedded in the zoning law or deliberating on them, if they're embedded in a revision of the subdivision law. I don't see personally why the town board couldn't do those simultaneously. We're in close concert, but I'll, I'll be happy to talk to the town board about it procedurally and just let you know what they say.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I think, Ernie and Barb, is there anything else you want to bring to our attention? I think we're sort of moving along on this.
I don't, I don't know if Barb wants to add anything. I mean, there's a few things that, you know, we did come across that, you know, are, are, you know, again, they're in our notes. I guess that I would just say we only got as far as, oh, I forget, we have not completed our review of this section, let me say that. And so our, our comments will stop at some point. And and we will continue. We plan to to meet in the coming week or or so. And we'll finish up our comments there. Barb, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, and and this is just a, a, a note for, I think, all of us and particularly Nan, when you start working on revisions. And and that's just to emphasize throughout that many of the elements of the zoning law and particularly the section or the article five that that Ernie and I were working on, which relates to design standards. It's important to be clear, not only in that article, but throughout the entire zoning law, that this, these kinds of design standards and other issues really are not applying to residential, especially single family residential. And I think, I think that's been, you know, that's been a kind of a point of confusion throughout some of the discussion of this, that that many of these standards are applying to business buildings, you know, commercial buildings, but not to residential dwellings. And so whatever clarifying, clarifying language throughout, not only in our article five that we were assigned to review, but throughout the document, I think that kind of clarifying language would be very helpful to make this a more reader friendly and citizen friendly, understandable law in terms of what the implications are and where it applies and what it, what it doesn't apply to.
Thank you.
And and I'd like to make one other observation, just so it is kind of clear. There is, at the very beginning, section five point one, which is called the the general standards for commercial, commercial building design. We've suggested that's retitled to general, general standards for non residential building design, just to make that more clear. But the whole section on design standards is actually kind of lifted from the document from the the task force. This is an area of, you know, largely aesthetic judgments. These have very little to do with environment. You know, water supply or any of those stuff. This is all about roof pitch, type of materials, colors, you know, parking lot sizes and and stuff. And so this is, this is a section that, you know, people do perceive as being quite restrictive. And and although I think it was, was put together with good intentions, I don't know whether it has really, you know, been reasonably vetted by the public. I don't know how that task force process went and and how much public information or public input was, was, you know, in that process. And and just want to point out that there's a, a whole bunch of stuff in here that is, you know, it's a little off putting. And, you know, kind of is, is, is subject to thinking about whether or not it belongs in this document or not.
Okay. Is that Bill? I see Bill's hand up.
Okay, so just to piggyback on what Ernie just said. Correct. So so that stuff, so what I think about the zoning law is, you know, the part of the zoning law is as long as it is, is we took an existing pretty large law, the site plan review law and the design standards and stuck them inside zoning. So in some ways, the zoning looks longer and awful and everything, because it actually incorporates some stuff we already had in the town. Now, the revisions of the site plan review law and the revisions to design standards were definitely available for the public to view as part of the task force work. Ernie, you're entirely right. They have not been vetted for exactly the point that the time they get vetted is when the law is up for consideration, which it never was. Therefore, this is the right time for the public vetting. So the public, you should read those and give us some feedback on that stuff. Because either if zoning were never to happen, then the site plan review law itself and the design standards would be up for public review as part of a new law. Or now, as part of zoning, they're up for public inspection and review as part of this process. So this is the time for that public vetting. So I have no, I I said, you shouldn't feel bad, there hasn't been vetting of it yet, because that was premature. This is the time for that vetting, and that's what we're doing. I think we should definitely have people comment.
I thought we had, I thought we had a site plan law.
Yes, that law went through the public hearing process in two thousand eighteen. This is a revision of that law and the design standards in particular are much more fleshed out. That has not gone through formal public review, because this is, this is the time.
Yeah, I mean, I would be much more accepting of it had it been, you know, through a review process. As I see it now is, you know, something that that is being kind of handed to us as a kind of a done deal, you know, here's this, you know, we had this task force, we went through a lot of trouble, we created this thing. And, you know, kind of, you, you have to accept it. And 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 so I just want to kind of make, make it clear, maybe we don't have to. That's just.
No, I hear you, but I do think it's time for the public to to weigh in on it.
Okay, I will try to point that out very clearly in when I do the minutes of this meeting and also perhaps in a, in a note on the website. And also, I am writing something for the Brookton Dale newsletter that I have to have done by January thirty first. And I think that's when you're finishing up something for the the next town. What do you, what is it called? The town?
Well, it's called the, we call it the Caroline Quarterly, but we only put out three last year.
Okay, so the Caroline Quarterly, but we only had three left. You know, that actually is very much how last year went. We have no actual notion of time in twenty twenty one. Anyone who did, please raise your hand and go give you a round of applause. Okay, so, good, I think that brought up a lot of interesting things for us to move ahead on and to think about.
Michelle had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't see you.
Yeah, I, well, I just wanted to say, since I was on that task force, and yeah, we did spend a lot of time on that, and we thought about it very hard. That this is just referring to commercial buildings, it's not referring to residential. And so I guess I'm curious to know why it's so off putting.
Well, I think as somebody said, maybe people don't, aren't realizing that. Maybe we have to be clearer when we write in in the writing, for one thing. And also very clear about what commercial buildings are. Because as you said, multifamily housing over a certain size is considered commercial.
I'll just, just, I just want to reemphasize Bill's point that it, it, you know, it was drafted by the task force, but it's never been.
Right, not been adopted.
Yeah, it's never been put forward for a public hearing or public review, so that's relevant.
Okay. Will, Will and I are the committee for C. And Will, you want to talk about what we've done so far and what other people have done?
I don't really have a report, Jane, I was waiting for you to respond to my emails. I'm sorry.
That's okay, I, well, I think what I, what, where we are is, we spent a lot of time, I think, both of us reading the first several sections and doing that commenting. And then I had family visiting, so we have not had a meeting yet. And I'll also, a number of you have not commented on our articles yet. Because we asked, I asked you very much to comment on the earlier ones for committees A and B. So please get your comments in on articles six and seven as soon as you can, and Will and I will try to meet next week. I think we probably have plenty to do next week in our meeting, from what I've seen come out tonight, to have real deep discussions about some of these items and try to make some decisions that we will put into a second draft. That will then, and and I really, again, will ask the public to to let us know what we're doing. I want to spend some time now going on to the comments we have received and what we are, how we are going to try to deal with those. So
I haven't commented on five yet, so I will be, but my computer's been screwed up and I've been busy working on this other stuff.
Okay, yeah, we, we're all, you know, the hourly rate for volunteers is not good. Just want to say that. So as we move along, let's come to the kind of comments we've gotten. So I've probably gotten something like twenty comments in over the last five days. And I have put some of those into a Dropbox document and sent them off now to everyone on the committee has them. And Bill and Barb had volunteered to try to take some of the comments, particularly the ones that were made at the town, at the public meetings we had. And Bill was going to attempt to transcribe them. How have your attempts went? Gone.
Well, no, they didn't go well. I say, well, what I can say is that they went terribly. And so what I could do for cheap or free wasn't great, so they were sent off to a professional outfit. And we now have excellent transcripts of those two question and answer sessions. The one from the Zoom meeting on December second and the other from the in person meeting on December fifth. And as Barb can discuss, she has, you know, gleaned other questions from things, documents that we have already, things that come in and wrote, you know, that up. And what I can say to you, Barb, is I'm three quarters of the way through commenting on it, and so I'll be sending it back to Barb. But I want to have a question for sort of the entire commission. In terms of presentation, you know, it's sort of a question of where we want to go with it from here. My rough thinking, and I, you know, this is what I want feedback on, is that what would be good is if on the website somewhere, these were organized by topic, not necessarily chronologically, not because of the source, that well, this came from this meeting, that came from that meeting. But they'd be grouped by topic areas, so someone was wondering about the process or wondering about site plan or wondering about this, that they can go there and see all the questions that were asked about that topic. Does that seem reasonable? Or indeed, should it be more be, here's the questions that came up at the December fifth meeting, and here's our answers to them. You know, what seems to make more sense? Particularly as we go forward, we will keep adding things to that. And so then do we have, how do we tell people, well, there's now three new answers under, you know, this topic area? So there's some mechanical details that we better iron out pretty quickly if we want these up by this weekend.
Okay. I don't expect to get everything up this weekend, but if we can get some stuff up, that would be great. I personally think by topic makes tremendous sense. What do other people think?
And this, this is Barb. I, I agree, you know, doing by general topic areas, I, you know, I'd still advocate that we keep up the separate, separate document that's already posted on FAQs, which is, you know, kind of frequently asked background questions. So keep that as is and then have a, have a separate, you know, site or webpage that that has the, the, the questions. And I will say that some of the things that we're receiving are more comment than question. But we're trying to turn those kind of into questions that can be answered, so that we're giving a response to to that idea as possible. But I, I, I do think that organizing it by topic areas would be more useful to the reader. And I would, I would just suggest a very simple technique of of adding a date when posted. You know, like, you know, you know, post, posted January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. And then, you know, if we get ten more in, you know, posted February fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Not the day that they're received, because that's like way too complicated to track. But the day that we post the answer is just a simple way to do it. And then somebody can, you know, can scroll through the entire document or site and, you know, look for the dates since the last time they scrolled through.
That's a great idea. Thank you, I see a couple of thumbs up. I, I really, I want to thank you so much, the two of you, for, for doing this. I have sent a brief note out to people that says, thank you for your comment. We are sending these out to, to everyone on the commission so that they can read them. And we are trying to figure out a way to organize them, and we will discuss that tonight. And I think this sounds good. I have no expectation that every answer will be up soon. And I think there will be a number of questions that can be, you know, merged together and conflated because they're about the same. And then there are a lot, I mean, there is, I guess I have to have an answer to, I just don't want zoning. And the answer that I have is, the board asked us to And the answer that I have is the board asked us to come up with something and we are responding to the board. Um, and we understand that some people don't want zoning. We completely understand that, but that's not what we were asked to do in our charge. So we're doing this.
Now, are these, are these still questions from way back from the meetings?
There are questions in the meeting that, that have just been transcribed. And then there are questions that I've gotten in over the last week. A lot of questions.
Cause I know I've heard a couple of different times that my question is not yet answered.
I've heard that too, and I, we haven't had the ability before to have them up in writing. I had told people that they were there in, um, on the, in a 30 minute section of a, of watching the Zoom, but that was not an easy thing for some people to do. So I hope this is helpful to, to the community. Good.
Jean, um, Jean, if I could just, just make a, a kind of a procedural comment that it, it might be helpful to be clear about if, if this is the way that, that you're proceeding. I, I, I think we're experiencing this and I expect and hope that the zoning commission receives a lot more comment, uh, from the public, you know, in the terms of questions or suggestions about particular sections of the draft law that's posted. Um, as, as we get more specific, you know, as there's more specific information available to, to, uh, town residents, I expect that there will be more specific comments about those, those specific sections that are available for, for review. Um, and, and so given that, um, I, that, that I expect there will be continuing to, to be comments and questions that are sent to you. Just a point of procedure that I, I think it's very, um, kind of you and appropriate to respond to somebody who sends you an email to say, uh, thank you, I received this. But I, I think it's not realistic to think that you're going to be able to, um, to send a detailed, uh, uh, response, content response back to everybody who writes to you. So as a point of procedure, indicating that, um, you know, thank you for submitting this, you know, we're working on, on answering questions that, that members like you, uh, send in. And you'll find, uh, the response to your question as well as a whole lot of others that are posted on the website.
I think now that we have, um, a way of getting those things up, that will be my answer now. Cause the today's was, we're going to talk about this tonight. But as I answer questions in the future, I will definitely do that. And say that I would hope that starting perhaps on Monday, they go back to the website and we'll have things there by topic and it may take a week or two for answers to get up. So that sounds great.
One quick question from me.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, and sort of clarifies, I know that, that in the past Nan has offered to help write answers and I think that's going to be most appropriate. So I want to make sure that that is indeed going to be the case, that it isn't necessarily fault to, to Barb, you know, or me or Eugene to, to write every answer to some of these detailed questions. Is it okay that we would decide, okay, these several we should forward to Nan and have her answer? Is that part of the process?
Please do that. And, um, again, Nan, we don't expect you to drop the, you know, do something at a time at a turnaround. Is that?
And, and, and to show you, I mean, the, the point would be that Barb will handle what we can or we think that we can do reasonably. But the things that seem more appropriate for you, there would be a subset, small subset would, would be okay that we send it to you.
Just send them over and I'll do my best to get them out as soon as I can.
Great. And my intention with the transcripts is indeed to look through them, organize stuff. But since those are sort of spoken answers, I will massage them so they come off more as written than spoken speech. But we certainly want to pass them those by use and those were your answers to begin with, uh, to make sure that I haven't garbled something or you can make any other clarifying remarks in there that you want to do.
Okay. Wonderful. Uh, Tim has his hand up.
Can I just make a procedural suggestion related to this? As I'm listening to this, one of my concerns is that the, if, if the answers are quite detailed in terms of some specific topic, my, my concern is that the public not be misled to anticipate that this is an affirmative response. In other words, that most of these very specific areas either have yet to be discussed or clearly are going to undergo evolution by these own main commissions. So if you, I just recommend building in some kind of language to that effect. Just, just to avoid misunderstandings.
Thanks, Tim. It may be very useful to have a heading on the page where all the questions are that says, this is a developing, this, uh, this is a, a document that is developing and we are in the process and nothing is certain.
I, I can vouch that, that Barb did a very, uh, careful job of that in the answers that she has already written.
Thank you. Lovely to have people you can rely on to do this. Michelle, thank you.
Oh, did you send us the link for the Dropbox? Cause I don't think I have it.
I sent it right before I left tonight. So maybe around 6:30.
Okay, I'll, I'll check again.
Jean, I, I had trouble getting into it. Um, so I, I might need some clarification on, on that. So we, we can talk tomorrow about it.
I'll look at it tonight and if I can't make it work, I'll try again tomorrow because, you know, you know what I, what IT people tell me is that I'm a user. You know, that, which is always, which is a four letter word in the eyes of IT people. They think I'm a user, you know, and they're bad. So not an expert. Okay. Let's talk about what we think we can get done at some upcoming meetings. So our next meeting is February 8th. We will be talking very much about the questions from Committee A, which are sections two and three. We will, I, I will put those, um, taking Michelle's report and things that have come up tonight. Make sure that those are in the agenda and we will work our way through that. I think from Committee B, what I sort of heard tonight is people think it makes sense to pretty much have, um, a lot of the, the subdivision law in the subdivision law, but to reference it into, in the zoning law and to have the parts that have to be in there in order to make it and a good zoning law. What Dan tells us that we must have in there. So, uh, things about the exempt parts for, for sure. And, um, and that we need to make sure that we come up with what we would need to tell the town board that should happen in this subdivision law. We will also begin to look at the design standards. And, um, and I think if we have not commented yet on Article Five, please article, uh, comment in Article Five on Article Six and Article Seven. So that Barbara and, um, and Ernie can put those into their thinking and that Will and I can come back with some ideas about Article Six and Seven. Also, if there's time in this next couple of weeks, I think we need to start looking at Article Three. No, Four.
Four.
We have, because we have not read that yet. Um, Article Four. So we will do that. So I think that that very much would take up, uh, probably February 8th and February 15th. And we will be doing that. I guess my question that I have for people is can we look enough into the future to think when we might be ready to have a public meeting and another document ready for people to look at in order to have a public informational meeting? I see Bill's hand up and then Barbara's.
I think Barbara's first.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I am going back to the Dropbox issue, Jean, and, uh, just pointing out, I just checked the Dropbox. And the only three people who have access to the Dropbox are you, me and Bill. So you sent the link to everyone else, but you didn't give them access within Dropbox. So, uh, just if after that gets corrected, everybody else will be able to access it. Thanks.
Do that again and I'll try to do it better. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll probably sound like a broken record here, but, um, you know, I think this document is long enough and big enough that it needs to have even public information meetings, uh, in parts. And, um, I would highly recommend Articles Two and Three, perhaps Articles Two, Three and Four, but certainly Articles Two and Three be one public information session. And I think that that could happen, uh, at the, certainly by the end of February, if not a little sooner. Because I really hope we deal with that next meeting, uh, might take two meetings. So that'd be my suggestion for that and that we then, um, expect to have a, uh, a, a public information session on essentially the site plan reviewy stuff. So now we're talking Articles, uh, uh, Five and Six Design Standards. And I really, maybe Four, Five and Six should be one meeting. And then after that, that's kind of it. And then a couple of months after that is the public hearing. And I, we could also have three public information meetings. Anyway, that's my vote is we have a roughly soon. I don't think we'll be ready by the end of February to have it on the whole document. And I think it'd be unfair to people to try to expect to have information session that they won't like be six hours long on the whole damn thing. So we should have two separate ones. My vote.
Okay. Michelle?
My, oh, I'm unmuted. Okay. Yeah, I guess I agree with Bill on that. Cause I, I really think just judging from our conversation tonight, it's going to take us a while just to, to figure out the boundaries of the, of the Hamlets and what's allowed, um, and going over that use table. Cause we had some comments on the use table. And then the other big discussion thing I think are the dimensions of commercial, commercial buildings, what dimensions you're, you know, that whole line, what dimensions we're going to accept in each one of these Hamlets in different places. I could see a whole meeting just on that discussion.
Okay.
Unless there's a, a way we can comment on it during the week, you know, just through email or polls or, or something like that.
Okay, I will, um, think about that and see if we can. Barb, I see your hand up.
Um, yeah, I, I agree, uh, with Bill's general approach, although, um, to the first meeting, I would ask that it not only be Articles One, Two and Three, but also, uh, the section on definitions or terminology. Because I, I think those are important to be able to interpret some of the language in the first three articles.
If we can pull it off, maybe just the, um, the definitions that appear in those sections, but that might be too much work to extract, but, because the whole definition section is, is gargantuan too.
It is. Okay. I, I think one of the things we said in an earlier meeting is we would not want to have a public meeting unless we had a document posted for at least two weeks. So as we, um, I think at, after the next meeting, we'll, I think we'll be able to determine when we think we can have that done and suggest a public meeting. And that would be great. An information session, not a public hearing, a public, uh, public information session. Which at this moment, I think is probably a Zoom thing. God help us. But that's where we are. We've just got a tremendous number of cases, uh, go, still going on doing. Bill?
Broken record again, you know, we've seen the upsetness in town about Zoom stuff because of difficult access, both the internet, computers, whatever. I don't know how to do it. And maybe if we're in March, it'll be a nice warm day in early March. We need to figure out an in-person option of some kind. I admit, I'm one of the ones that's least wanting to meet in person. We need to figure out something that's safe or maybe it's like, you know, there's a room or one person at a time if you come in, but we, we have to provide something that's not on Zoom, uh, to discuss this stuff. And if, if we have to, then we're going to have to wait till the end of March when the weather's nice and, and Omicron has died down. I just don't think we can, can in good faith proceed without, again, I want both an online, both a Zoom version and, and a, uh, uh, in-person version, just like the last time.
I, I want them too. I just, I just don't know how to do that. Mark?
I'm just saying, I thought the fire hall worked well and we'll do that again.
I do think the fire hall worked well, but I, um, we were not having the same kind of outbreak then as we are having now in terms of numbers of cases a day. And I realized that for a tremendous number of people who, who test positive, it is not a difficult thing, but we had another reported death in the county today. And we've had about five in the last two weeks and I find that troubling. So, um, we can discuss this again next week and we'll try to figure out a way to move, uh, to move ahead on this and to get some advice from, you know, medical professionals about this.
I agree with what Michelle said, Barb. Sounds good to me. Did you say February 15th?
Uh, I said February 8th, oh, and 22nd. I just, I think I misspoke. Okay. So yeah, so February 8th and 22nd would be our normal meetings and March 8th and 22nd would be our normal meetings. Okay. Is there anything else this evening for the good and the order of what we're doing here? No.
We're gonna, just in our section, I know two and three, we have quite a few questions, so it's going to take some time to go over that.
Yeah, it is. That's, I think those are the primary things we're doing next week. Next week is really a hands-on working meeting. So, uh, I really want to thank everyone. You've all put in a huge amount of time on this. It's been such fun. Sure.
Your, you, I think there was a question in the group about whether, whether you could hash things over between meetings.
Yes.
That's, that's totally okay.
Okay.
And then what you would do is at the next meeting, you would present to the public whatever you came up with.
Okay, so maybe we can do that. We'll, um, we'll see if we can manage to find a time within the next two weeks where we have a, maybe a working session on Zoom and, um, and then come in and present a report of that. That's good.
I, I would also, I would also hope that everybody continue to add comments to the master document. I think that's enormously helpful and it certainly organizes stuff for Nan, so.
Yeah, it really does. It's been, uh, it's been really good. Thanks to whoever developed Google Docs. Michelle?
Michelle did?
Michelle did that, yeah.
Definitely me. Now, um, now, well, so do you want me to sort of add comments from that list I sent around to the master document or it just seemed so unwillly?
No, at this point, I think what I'll do is look at that and I'll write up an agenda and I will talk to Nan probably by the end of this week to think about the next meeting because we try to plan the agenda together. So I, I think we're good with what you've sent. I also said that I would take 10 minutes at the end and try to answer any questions if someone from the public has a question about this evening and see if that goes well. I don't have, um, a huge amount of, if I made my answers, maybe we don't know yet. But if anyone has a question, I am happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? Looking for.
I don't see any.
Zoom hands.
Okay. Nan, before we go, is there anything that you want to tell us that we should think about?
Uh, no, I think, you know, thinking through all of these questions that have been raised is in making some decisions is where you're at right now. Um, I, I guess I would just ask the zoning commission members to, I think I asked this before. You let me know when you want me to comment on your comments and questions. I have not done that yet. So just let me know what, when, and you know, when you're ready for that. For the meantime, I'm, you know, I'm looking at them, but I haven't, I haven't answered anything. So you just let me know what you need.
Okay, and, um, I'll be in touch about a time for us to talk. Okay, um, good night, everyone. We are adjourned.
The meeting is adjourned.
I see. Uh, thank you for your hard work, everyone. Thanks. Okay. Well, I had to clean my office up because I, it's where I stuck one.